G M, and I am calling to order the Balden Park City Council regular meeting. And I believe we have Pastor Jackson here. If you would be kind enough to lead us in a location, please.
Heavenly Father, we come before you in the name of the Lord. Thank you for the rights and privilege to come to your throne of grace, that we may find grace and help in time of need. And I just want to lift up some of these needs, Father. First of all, I want to lift up our military before you, Father, those that have lost their lives and those that are abroad. And I lift up our school before you, Father. The battle with the masks, the shots, and all that we're in, Lord, we lift that up before you. You have all wisdom and knowledge and understanding. And we're asking you for our leaders to get wisdom and knowledge and understanding in how to lead this nation and how to lead this city, Lord God. Put your hand upon our mayor and our city council, those that are making the decisions, Father. We thank you, Father God, for bringing our children out of situations with drugs and gangs, Lord God. Putting in their hearts and their minds for education and a higher education, Lord. We thank you for touching our businesses, Lord God, that the businesses will be built back up once again because of the pandemic that brought them down. And some have even lost their businesses. Lord, and also lift up the first responders, Father. Those that are helping those that have caught the COVID and the Delta and other sicknesses that they are given their lives that they may live. And I'm asking you also, Lord, in helping their families, Lord God, as well. We are in a situation now that we need you like never before, and we're calling upon your name, Lord. And we're asking for your mighty hand to be up on us. And we thank you, Lord, for the police department, the fire department, the ambulance drivers, all of those that are working to help to make the city great. In the name of the Lord, we pray, amen.
City manager, if you would be kind enough to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pleasure, Mayor. Please place the flag. Place your right hand over your heart. Begin. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the people for which we stand, a nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. City clerk, would you mind doing a roll call?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Council members Daniel, Damian.
Here.
Council member Monica Garcia.
Here.
Council member Paul Hernandez.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Alejandra Avila.
Here.
And Mayor Emmanuel Estrada.
Here. Thank you for that. City attorney, is there anything to report out from closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. The council did consider several items in closed session. I did receive direction on some settlement issues and no final action was taken. We will report out on those settlement issues once they are final. So there's no reportable action today. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And then I'll make a motion to adjourn the city council special meeting. Can I get a second?
Second.
Great. Any objections? If not, the special city council meeting is adjourned. And we go back to our regular city council meeting where we have a presentation by Shelley Price, the senior manager for SUFA regarding solar powered digital science for transit sublocations.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. If I may, I'd like to just provide a little bit of background before we get started. So recently, in the most recent amendment to the city's transit services agreement, the city removed the largely unsuccessful bus shelter advertising program so that it can be brought in-house. Staff has explored options and is proposing placing the SUFA branded signs that you will see here today in the presentation. The signs will be placed at various transit stops as part of a proof of concept to provide transit users with relative real-time information such as bus arrival times. The signs are ad-based and will complement the shelter kiosks that are already in place. I've asked David Lopez, our transit coordinator, to be here. And so with that, I would like to introduce Shelley Price, who is joining us via Zoom to tell you more about the signs. Shelley?
Hi, everyone. Thanks, Sam, and thank you, Mayor. I am definitely excited to be here on behalf of SUFA. As I both introduced me, I'm actually, this is a dated slide, the Senior Manager of City Growth for SUFA, which just means I find more partners, particularly in the West, to partner on our signs. SUFA is a woman-founded smart cities startup based in Cambridge, Massachusetts. We were founded out of MIT's Media Lab, and so a lot of our longtime partners are in the Boston area. But I am excited to say that we have been really expanding west pretty rapidly, including quite a few cities in California. Close to you, we have partnerships in Eastvale and San Jacinto already. And then Covina just installed this week, but you would be among our first in LA County, so that would be really exciting for us. Next slide. If you have all used a Kindle before, and it's okay if you haven't, but if you have, it gives you a nice reference for what it's like to interact with the screen on our signs. It's essentially a 42-inch version of that same screen. We partner directly with E Ink, the maker of that screen, for these screens in our signs, which are essentially the screen housed within this big steel structure with a solar collector on top. And the main reason that we do use that type of screen is that it allows us to be 100% solar powered. And that's really important to us, that we're offering a clean technology that we're putting on the world, out in your community, hopefully. And it does offer a few other benefits, though. So the solar power is obviously first, but it does also remain visible in bright sunlight, which is nice because these are intended to be out in your public spaces in a pedestrian-oriented environment. An LCD screen, you might encounter some glare at some angles. But just like paper, this is called a digital paper display. It absorbs where it needs to absorb and reflects where it needs to reflect to maintain visibility. It's also nice in that it can be placed in a residential area or an area with sensitive environment. Obviously, that's only important in some use cases. But because it doesn't have a backlight, it doesn't add any light pollution. It does remain visible at night, however, there's a little light bar LED right above the screen that pops on at night and it points directly at the screen. So there's no light pollution going outward. The other nice feature about that type of screen is that it can update in real time over a 4G cell network. And our operations team sets up that connection. So that 4G updating and the solar power combine to make a really quick installation. The only connection is four holes in the ground, four bolts, and then we're good to go. So we don't need to excavate your sidewalks to connect anything, which is nice for a lot of public works teams to hear. And then it allows us to put these signs out into wherever you want them to increase equity of access to information in real time. Next slide. So the screen you're looking at is just one example of how we can set the screens up. We work with each of our city partners to decide which applets, we call them, fill the different content blocks on your specific signs. So obviously, the city here, Malden, Massachusetts, has their Twitter feed right on the screen, not all of our signs do. But it's a really nice way to share the city's content that staff is already spending time to create out in the world with more people who may not follow you on Twitter or Facebook, or maybe just didn't check it that day, or maybe don't have a smartphone at all. So you're increasing access to information without creating any new time that must be spent by staff. This sign also has a real-time transit feed on it for both a train and a bus, I think, in that instance. And that's something we can do with your transit agency as well, or both actually with the Metro Link and the STI. So we can sync up with all sorts of different feeds to make it such that people know when the bus is actually coming or when the train's actually coming rather than going with the schedule. The top left-hand corner of the one you're looking at is where city staff or even partners, if you decide to open it up to, sometimes Main Street organizations will get involved or chambers. You can post on a more custom basis. So if you have, you know, up-to-date COVID information, like testing site around the corner from this sign, you can post that so people know where in the neighborhood things are and what's relevant and happening in that moment. So obviously, we know COVID updates have changed very rapidly and sort of unexpectedly sometimes in the last year and a half. So a lot of our partners have shared information on COVID. It could also be a lot more fun related information. It could be city events. It could be stuff your local businesses are doing. You know, we really want to help them stay resilient during this time, too. So as much as you want to share on it, you can. We don't limit it. And your staff would do so through our own platform. It's called sufa-talk.com. We would provide logins as part of the installation. And it's cloud-based, so you can share information right from your desk without using staff time to go post it wherever it needs to reach the community. Next slide. These are just some other examples of applets that are out in the world with our current partners. Emergency alerts, obviously, if you needed to get word out to all the signs at one time, that's a nice real-time way to do that. The events calendar is another one where we can sync up with it upon installation. So you're not using staff time to share information that may be created already on your website, but not everyone goes to your website or maybe didn't check it that day. I worked for the city here. I'm in Las Vegas. I'm closer to you than the rest of our team before I came to SUFA, and I didn't check the city's website, and I was an employee. So you're at least expanding the audience somewhat. The What's Open applet that this mentions is something we started during COVID to offer to local businesses to post for free to say, hey, why don't you, don't forget about us. We're just, we're doing takeout only now, or whatever it is they were doing. A lot of cities have obviously, as we've opened up a bit more, changed this to be what's new. And then some have moved away from using it. The real-time transit schedule we mentioned is key. It's a really cool use case for our signs that you all might be utilizing. The screens are not touchscreen, which is also kind of nice when we weren't sure how COVID was transmitted. Cities weren't very interested in that. They can be very interactive, though, in a number of ways. And this opinion poll is one way. So a lot of cities will post a question, and it could be something fun, like what do you want to do this summer? Or it could be something that helps you collect more data from more people on some sort of planning survey. Or, you know, what do you want to see on the site? Or what resources do you need from the city that you're not getting? So it's really whatever you want it to be. And then we have a team of content management folks that are checking responses before they go live if you do decide to populate the responses on the screen as they come in. So it could be something fun where whoever's standing in front of the sign can really interact with it. You could also keep it internal if you needed to keep those responses quiet for some reason as part of a data collection effort. Next slide. I mentioned most of these. A lot of cities do also have weather on there. Your weather is pretty nice. And if they're standing in front of the sign, they already know. The live transit feed I mentioned, I think we've covered these, but just give you some more ideas of what they could look like. Next slide. This is just to show you that SUFA Talk platform I mentioned, your staff would have access to, post to the signs directly from their desks. And then you could also see, or the staff could also see what is showing on each of your signs at any given moment. Next slide. This is my favorite feature of the sign. I'm a city planner, my background. And it is something that I never had that I needed. It is pedestrian data. So each sign has a sensor that's capturing a pure count. We don't know anything about who people are that are walking by or where they're going unless they happen to be walking down the line of our signs. So we're not capturing anything identifiable other than there is somebody there. And then we are able to provide that count back to you in this interactive dashboard or to your staff so that you can make more database decisions about infrastructure improvements or, you know, to know how many people attended an event this year over last year and what might you need to tweak about your messaging for it. You can look at it down to the hour. You could share it with local businesses to help them figure out, you know, their ideal hours. People got out and about a little bit differently over the last year and a half than they did prior. And if businesses aren't open, they may not see that there's a big crowd happening before they open. Kind of depends on the setup, whether or not that's the case. But cities basically can use it for however they want to. They can apply for grants using this data to show how many people a project is likely to impact. Really can be used however you want to to make, to know that you have numbers around the decisions you're making. Next slide. The staff would also have this insight into what's on each screen, but also what is happening with the hardware of the sign. A lot of this is for us. But just in case the staff is curious when it was maintained last, SUFA takes care of maintenance and cleaning. And so otherwise, you know, hopefully, wouldn't be able to tell. Assuming that we keep it in to-cup shape. And so in case anyone is curious when it was maintained last. And then there's also the status of the solar battery, which we imagine will be, will work amazingly where you are because it may get through Boston winters. Next slide. The outside of the screen on the sign, so the area around the screen on the front, the sides and the back are typically covered in this high-quality vinyl that our designer can create for you. A lot of cities will use this to incorporate their wayfinding, so a map. The one on the left here has a listing instead of the map. And it could be each sign showing a map that's relevant to that location. It can help, you know, create a sense of identity for the whole city or individual neighborhoods. You can send our designer colors, logos. It can really make it look official as part of the city. And then the wayfinding is especially helpful in a number of cities. You can also put QR codes, not only on the vinyl, like this one is showing, but on the screen. That's another feature of the E Ink screen. It's very scannable. And so you can make a lot of things a lot more interactive in that way, too. You can link to signups and historical information, by transit passes, whatever you want to link to. This one's obviously linking to emergency alerts. Next slide. I mentioned some of this already. SUFA does want this to be as much of a white-glove service as you want it to be. We do take care of installation, regular cleaning and maintenance, content management, and that's in terms of both sourcing sponsorships to help cover some of the costs as well as anything that requires integration with different data sources, like your events calendar and your transit feed. And then also, I mentioned the opinion polling. You know, we're checking it before it goes live to make sure there's not a kid out there sending in something that's fun for them, but maybe not for the city. The package is essentially all-inclusive in that sense, with the pedestrian data, the number of logins. And then if it is an advertised supportive model that you go with, we share 20% of the net revenue back to the city to hopefully cover your costs and then develop a small income stream after that. Next slide. So at this point, I can open it up to questions, and I believe Sam will help take some that are more from the city's perspective. So I would love to know what else I can answer for you all.
Great. Thank you for that. So I don't have any questions, but I do think, you know, I'm very excited for these. I just saw them today in Covina. I stopped by their downtown. And they're actually, they're actually a lot slimmer than they look in the pictures. They're probably around four, four or five inches wide, right? At the, I mean, not at the flare, but right at the center of the.
Yeah, they are really thin. That's right.
And they look very nice. They're very sturdy. So I'm very excited. I think that if this works out, this can be a potential way of reaching, you know, further audiences at the border of our city. You know, people who are riding mass transit and other residents that we don't normally have the opportunity to get information to. So I'm very excited for this. I really hope it works out and we can expand on it. If any council members have any questions or concerns?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. Just a couple, just a couple of questions. One is, how are they protected or what type of coverings do you have? Or how do you deal with graffiti on these items and or, you know, scratching of the screen or anything like that?
Yeah, really good question. And it's actually one I get from every city in California. So it'll be interesting to see how our installations play out there. It is up to SUFA to take care of that. It's in the agreement that we keep them looking tip-top. And our name is on the sign as well, so we want them looking as good as possible. We obviously can't prevent it, so we do need to figure out, obviously, how to keep them clean. In a lot of cases, graffiti is cleanable. I'm not sure that's a word, able to be cleaned. Yeah, our maintenance contractor, we contract with people on the ground locally to make sure we can be there, you know, as soon as we know about it. So we would need to make sure that we're the ones contacted, whether it's, you know, however you find out about it, whether it's a 3-1-1 system or whatever it is, we would need to be contacted. And so we could clean it. If it's a vinyl, we could just replace the vinyl. And we do find, though, we actually don't encounter it as much as you would expect. My theories about that are that the vinyl is not a blank canvas. When you've got all sorts of things on it, whatever is added to it won't show up. Some of our city partners even have their local artists help design the vinyl, so it could be a respect thing. You know, to my knowledge, we've not had a screen damaged in that way. We had one smashed with a bat once, and we just replaced it. There's also another theory that I have about why we don't see this as often as you would expect is that we do put these in places where there are people out and about. And they do look fairly formal in this monolithic design. And they look as if they could have a security camera on them. So we really don't encounter it. We did have one hit by a car, which they're pedestrian-oriented, so that says that that car was pretty off-track.
Excellent. And then the follow-up question is, you know, obviously with technology and 4G and everything else, you know, have these ever been hacked, you know, from, you know, a 10-year-old or a 13-year-old nowadays?
Yeah, good question.
What type of prevention around that?
So I actually don't know if I can speak to the technology around why we have not been hacked. But we do have the cyber liability insurance that we also cover the city with. And then we can take, we can override anything that shows up on the screen, which is typically coming from our cities. But if it were the case that somehow someone were to get in and it wasn't a city, we can take things down immediately, basically. That's a really good question. I can follow up with you if you would like more details on the hackability.
Yeah, I mean, nowadays, as you can imagine, everything's hackable.
Yeah.
It's just the level of sophistication, but yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Looking forward to having these in our city.
Oh, fantastic.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. I have a question, Shelley. You mentioned that this will collect pedestrian information. So does it basically track like traffic and hours? And like you said, it doesn't collect any personal information, right?
Right. So the way that it does that is through, it's capturing the number of cellphone MAC addresses that are looking for Wi-Fi. So we don't know anything about who it is, whose phone it is. We just know, oh, that's one number. So we count that as an individual. And we have a certain amount of time that calculates as a session. It's this very complicated algorithm. You may not want the details up, but I can send it to you if you'd like. So obviously, not everyone has their phone set up appropriately to be looking for Wi-Fi. And we are not providing Wi-Fi. We just know that someone's looking for it. The phone is looking for it. So we have these in enough cities now to where we haven't calibrated it really well. We know if we're seeing this many, we're very likely missing exactly this many people, including, you know, other people who may not have smartphones that are looking for Wi-Fi.
So then my next question is, what does the company do with that information?
We share it back with you only.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a pure number, so it's not really useful in a lot of other ways.
Yeah, I was going to say, what are the uses of that information?
So from a city's perspective, you could use it to figure out how many people are using your public spaces at various times, which is useful for all sorts of decision-making, whether you're planning events or making infrastructure decisions. You know, which sidewalk is actually worth spending the money on first. So capital improvement plan prioritization. I used to need it when I was a planner for grant applications to know how many people use a park, for instance, to say, if I were to get this grant and that grant covers some sort of improvement, it's likely to help this many people. So a lot of it can just make your decisions more database. We have, as I shared earlier, we have had some cities actually share it with our local businesses, so the local businesses can see the traffic. You could also share it with prospective businesses to say, we have this many people. Don't you want to put your business here? So it's really whatever you want to use it for, but we do have quite a few use cases that we've seen cities use. You could also kind of use it to estimate how many people have seen your content on the signs.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, good question.
Mayor, I just have one question. Shelley, thank you very much for the presentation. I just have one quick question.
Yeah.
On the images there, I've seen the screens that were all black and white. Will these be in color or will they be black and white?
The technology that E Ink offers now is only black and white. And because that's what allows us to be solar-powered, and that's our most important feature, we'll stick with it. As soon as they do have color, we'll roll it out to our signs, even if they're already in the ground. We know that a lot of cities do like color. Although a lot of cities actually think they want it, and then when they get the black and white, they realize it's, it kind of looks official, you know? But that's it. I live in Las Vegas. People like color. So that E Ink actually currently has something, I'll tell you that this is, this is in development. They have a prototype in our office right now that has red, I think, and yellow only. So the fact that they decided to send that out as a prototype says they might be a ways off from the full color. So we would rather have the full grayscale. It's a really high-quality grayscale. But yeah, I definitely understand the need for color.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Well, it seems like everybody got their questions and comments answered. Sam, I don't know if you have any extra comments, but if not, thank you for working on this. And of course, thank you to Shelley for working on this great presentation. I think it's a great, I think it really is a great opportunity to start giving a little bit of a vibe to our downtown. I'm really looking forward to it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. And thank you for being here virtually.
Thank you.
And so at this moment, I will move to open Public Communications. Chief Deputy, sorry, City Clerk.
Yes, thank you. Catherine Lozier, Library Updates.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmembers, community partners, and fellow community members. In November, the LA County Library is going to be celebrating Native American Heritage Month. Our Native, or excuse me, our American Indian Resource Center has planned out virtual programs as well as on our website, has created book lists, has created activities, and has also created a Native American Heritage Month Virtual Film Festival using our online canopy film streaming platform. It's free for use with a library card and PIN number. You can sign up for one of those online. And it will include four films, and the titles are The Rambler, The Indians Who Rocked the World, Mankiller, Activist Feminist and Cherokee Chief, How People Got Fire, and Barking Water. In addition to the films, there are discussion guides and other resources, including more movies that you could stream free with the library. And then some of the activities, or excuse me, some of the programs that are planned include a preschool storytime on Friday that will feature Native American authors and themes. And that's for ages two to five and parents. And then a program that will be taking place on Tuesday, November 9th, is a partnership with Theodore Payne Foundation, which does native plants, native Californian plants. And Kat High, who is of Hoopa descent, they'll be tying in a program that talks about native Californian plants and how they were of importance to the native peoples here in California. And that will take place at 6:00 PM. And at a few libraries, and we're running out pretty soon at Balden Park, we have kits where you can get a couple of plants to take home and plant as part of this program. And thank you so much. You can find the information about all of these resources and programs at our website, lacountylibrary.org. You can always stop in and see us at the library. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Alfonso Ramirez, he will talk about fruit vendors and taco stands and homeless.
Good evening to all. Thank you for your time. I'm here about seeing fruit vendors all over the area, and my concern is their health. I've seen these guys are there the whole day. Where do these guys use the restroom? I'm pretty sure we all work and we use the restroom many times. So that's my concern. I've seen them cutting, you know. I've seen taco stands. I called code enforcement a couple of weeks ago and they said Balden Park does not allow taco stands. 100% illegal. I spoke to Jose Martinez. And I even called the police on them, and they're still, they're still functioning. I've seen them in Balden Park Boulevard in Tracy. That one's about a month old. I've seen another one on Ramona Boulevard in La Rica, Ramona Boulevard Foster, and then also on Main and Point Avenue. So these guys are just coming out everywhere. And if you go to the neighboring city of El Monte. If you go to the neighboring city of El Monte. It's just, it's, it's just loaded with tacos places everywhere. And my concern is the safety, health, our health. Cars are passing by, you're slamming on the brakes, brake test goes everywhere. That's going to people's foods. So you guys have to think about that. It's just, I think if we get a couple here and there, before we know it's gonna be like a swarm of places, those taco stands. And so just, that's one of my concerns, the food vendors. The taco stands, you know, how, how's their safety, their health? You know, how, how clean are they? Also homeless, I've seen homeless, they're, they're everywhere, right?
Quiero aprovechar este momento para agradecerle a la Oficina de Educación del Condado de Los Ángeles, Leico, a la Preparatoria de Baldwin Park y al liderazgo del Distrito Escolar Unificado de Baldwin Park por habernos permitido ofrecer entrenamientos a su comunidad de maestros, padres y de familia y estudiantes. Muy en especial al liderazgo de la Mesa Directiva por apoyar en adoptar unánimemente una póliza en contra del uso y venta de cigarrillos electrónicos y dispositivos de vapeo. Esto fue un gran triunfo ya que en el distrito se comprometió en buscar maneras para la prevención y intervención de servicios para nuestros estudiantes. Nuestro esfuerzo por un Baldwin Park saludable lleva ya dos años. Esto se dice fácil pero no hubiera sido posible sin la ayuda de toda la gente que participó en nuestras encuestas, donde los resultados coincidieron más del 95%, donde la comunidad favorece una póliza en apoyo a la restricción de la venta de productos de tabaco con sabor. Gracias a nuestro liderazgo que hace posible eventos comunitarios como Mark &amp; Farms. Gracias también a los parques y todas las oportunidades que la ciudad brinda a miembros de nuestra comunidad, como los campos para jugar soccer, ya que ahí tuvimos también la oportunidad de interactuar con la gente. Por último, quiero aprovechar para agradecerles a ustedes nuestro liderazgo por su apoyo al considerar una póliza que prohíbe la venta de producto de tabaco con sabor en nuestra comunidad. Su voto a favor de eliminar estos productos es un voto hacia los valores y compromiso de Baldwin Park para un futuro saludable para nuestros futuros líderes. Por lo mismo, estoy a favor del artículo nueve de la agenda de hoy y apoyo una póliza que prohíba la venta de productos de tabaco con sabor, ya que hace daño a los jóvenes de nuestra comunidad. Muchas gracias por su tiempo.
Good evening Mayor Estrada and members of the city council. My name is Yolanda Martinez. I've lived in this community for fifteen years. I'm a member of the Ruth Free Baldwin Park Coalition and mother. As a resident from this city and mother, I am worried for the health and well-being of my son and for all of the youth of our community. I wouldn't like it if my son or other teens would fall under the temptation and manipulation of flavored tobacco. I want to take this moment to thank the Los Angeles County Office of Education, Baldwin Park High School, and the entire leadership of the Baldwin Park Unified School District for allowing us to offer trainings and information to their community of teachers, parents, and students, especially to the leadership on the school board for supporting a policy voted unanimously against the use of sale of e-cigarettes and vaping devices. This was a huge success as the district committed to explore policies and ways for the intervention and prevention of services for our students. Our efforts in our community for a healthy Baldwin Park have been done for over two years. This seems easy, but it would not have been possible without the help of all of the people who participated in our public opinion surveys. The results showed that more than 95% of the community is in favor of a policy to support the restriction of flavored tobacco products. Thank you to our leadership who makes possible community events such as the farmers market. Thank you to the parks and to all for the opportunities that the city makes possible for members of our community, others like the fields to play soccer, as this was another opportunity we had to interact with people. To conclude, I want to take this opportunity to thank you for your leadership to support a policy to ban flavored tobacco products in our community. Your vote in favor to eliminate these products is a vote of the values and on the commitment of Baldwin Park for a healthy future for our future leaders. Because of this, I support item number nine from tonight's agenda. I support a policy that can prohibit the sale of flavored tobacco products as these are bad for the youth of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Christian Guillén will speak on questions about three of the biggest problems the city is currently facing.
Hello everyone. My name is Christian Guillén. I am a student at Cal State Fullerton, but I'm a resident here at Baldwin Park. I'm currently taking an American government class at Fullerton and one of those requirements for that class was to come to a city council meeting. And so a part of not only just coming to the city council meeting was to ask questions. So my question is, what are the three biggest problems or concerns that the city is currently facing and why?
This is the time for you to speak, so you have three minutes. They can answer your questions afterwards.
That's it. That's it for me. It's just one question.
Okay. One question, that's it?
Yeah.
Okay, so they can answer afterwards. Thank you. Carmen Vargas, streetlight and bimps or bumps?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, city staff. My name is Carmen Vargas. I'm a homeowner and resident here in Baldwin Park, 3856 Willow Avenue. I am at the corner of what is commonly known as Buente and Willow, but in reality I think it's Root and Willow, right across the street from Baldwin Park High School, the entrance of the student parking lot. I'm calling to, I came today to ask, I know this was brought up a few meetings ago, to ask if the city heavily consider four-way stop and/or speed bumps and/or flashing lights, something to slow cars down. I have several cameras in my yard, so I definitely have the footage, especially yesterday when there was a crash right in front of my house. Woke me up at 6:50 in the morning, two cars. Your police has the police report because they came. And it's pretty frightening when you have a 16-month-old baby and you wake up terrified that car is going to crash into your house. So if you can please either do the speed bump test and/or if you all were planning on attending the football game tomorrow, just look in back of you when you're sitting on the BP side and you will see the level of speed that the cars take from, because the stop where Buente, you know, where you turn in to go to Baldwin Park if you're dropping off a student, all the way there's not another stop until you get to West Covina. I'm right at the border. You know, for the safety of the residents, there's a lot of high school students that literally run across for their lives to get to the parking lot, students that are coming in and out of that parking lot, and also the cars that are actually going, you know, left or right off of Willow. It's a curve, for those of you don't know, it's a curve coming onto that street. So it's very difficult for anyone pulling out of Willow to see the cars to your left. You literally have to cross your fingers. That's what I do. And/or when anyone comes to my house, I tell them to make a U-turn, which you shouldn't have to do on a street. I mean, I think that if anything, you know, speed bump for cars to know that they need to slow down. And the last thing I'd like to request, if possible, to consider two cement pillars in the corner of my house to protect my home, because that car yesterday morning came very close to hitting my house. Thank you.
Thank you. Pauline Sliker will speak on item number nine.
Hi, I'm Pauline. I've been a resident of Baldwin Park since 1972 and I work at a retail and I've worked at it for years. By taking away the flavor of the tobacco and that, it would be taking away the sales from the store. They've done it in El Monte areas and you have to lay off a lot of the people that are working, which means my job could go away. And we do a lot, everything we do at the store, we check for ID, we do everything we're supposed to do by the laws. If it's a statewide thing, like the whole California, I would understand, but going city for city, it just doesn't make any sense because then the people that are buying the regular tobacco flavored or otherwise are buying other items, they'll just go to another city and we lose the city sales. And then, like I said, a lot of the stores are laying off people with COVID anyways. This will just be another item that it takes away, so thank you.
Thank you. Sonia Worrage, item number nine.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sonia. On that note as well, I'm a local business owner. I own a convenience store here in Baldwin Park. And COVID was a very tough year for us and cigarette sales definitely carried through our business, taking away the menthol ban for just the city itself. We've seen customers come from El Monte coming to our store and now they're going to move to West Covina and the other cities surrounding that have not made this initiative. So I'm here today to ask you to please postpone this ban until the statewide initiative in November and we can vote as a state to let us know if, you know, we could ban menthol as a state and that way it won't harm the businesses that are, you know, looking forward to the customers that are coming to us and not the city right next door, because I am neighboring the next city. So I'm asking for you guys to please allow the state to decide. We have a very beautiful state that is very health-conscious. I think as a state we can make that decision, but I would ask you to please allow it to be a statewide initiative and not a citywide initiative for the businesses of your city. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy Cam will speak on item number nine.
Good evening. As a retailer, I have businesses in El Monte, South El Monte, Baldwin Park, West Covina, Pomona, and different various areas. City of El Monte banned the flavored cigarettes. Our sales overall in the store took a dive and in these COVID years, it affected our profitability and we had to lay off people. Our sales in Baldwin Park, in South El Monte, West Covina grew because the customers from El Monte were shopping our stores. Today, when you look at putting a flavor ban, you are actually affecting your neighborhood businesses because businesses are already being harmed. And if we have this law which is across California, customers will stay and still shop the same cities and same businesses. But you will be putting people, retailers at a disadvantage. Around $5,000 hit per business is being taken when a flavor ban takes place because related items which are sold through the store will stop and the customers will move to other cities. That's the effect I have seen. As you look at banning, certainly in Baldwin Park, we will see the programs as a retailer we do with schools, air programs we do. We have good monitoring system. Vape sales have already been stopped in state of California, so no retailer is selling vape. When people say vape is affecting our kids, that's basically not a right statement because there is no vape sales in our stores. So to keep our businesses in Baldwin Park effective, profitable, we need to just work with California and all of California. And on the other hand, our customers are telling us that they are buying their cigarettes over the internet. So a lot of internet sales are taking place. That's another way our revenues are being affected. So as city leaders, I ask you, give us avenues, open up avenues where we can start making profits that we will lose if you take away the flavors. CBD, give us, we can offset our profits. But the thing is, good people like Pauline Sliker sitting here who have been working, living in Baldwin Park, people like Pauline and others will lose their jobs. People like me could lose my business. So we are looking at that you maintain and let's stay with California. If California bans it, we all will be on the even playing ground and that's all I ask for. Thank you.
Thank you. Jorge Garcia, he will speak on vendors. You will need an interpreter. If the interpreter is still online, can you please interpret for Mr. Garcia?
Absolutely. The interpreter is ready. Thank you.
Hola, soy alcalde Estrada. Este soy, yo soy vendedor ambulante. Quería hablar sobre los puntos que todos dan aquí. Yo trabajo solo fines de semana, en cuanto a lo de la salud y los puntos que comendan aquí de... Si ellos tienen dudas, nosotros manipulamos, estamos de manipular los alimentos de la mejor manera que se pueda. Usamos guantes, usamos personas para que cobren, una cocinera, un preparador. Yo soy residente de Baldwin Park, yo hablo por mí. Yo vivo a menos de un minuto.
Un minuto para que el intérprete.
Good evening, Mayor. I'm here to speak on, you know, the different points that other people have touched on in the past around street vending. I am actually a street vendor and I want to tell you that, and I want to speak to, you know, the different aspects relating, you know, public health or, and I want to add that as far as managing or handling the food, we have different people performing different tasks. I have a cook, I have somebody prepping the food as well. I am a resident of Baldwin Park. Adelante.
So quería ver de la manera, pues nosotros lo hacemos, a veces no es por gusto, sino que muchos de nosotros, pues tenemos que sacar adelante a nuestras familias. Yo tengo trabajo, yo tengo mi trabajo, pero con lo solo que me pagan así como está las rentas, está la comida, ahorita toda la canasta básica se ha ido al doble, se ha ido al doble. Les digo porque yo compro mucha comida, pues para vender también. Pues no lo hacemos por gusto, solamente pues queremos sacar, hacer un dinero extra y estamos en la mejor disposición de colaborar con ustedes. Yo no sé si nos pueden designar alguna área, este, yo no sé cómo trabajaría con ustedes.
And yeah, we are doing this not because we want to, but because we have to. It's just another means for us to get ahead. I do have a job, you know, a nine-to-five job and I do this on the weekends and I do it because I need to afford to pay for groceries for my family, which are twice as much, you know, as of late. And so I do want to make some extra money on the side and so I'm here to maybe see if there's a way for us to collaborate, if maybe you can assign a specific sites where we can ban. Adelante.
Sí, en cuanto a la mayoría de la gente, mis clientes, estoy hablando por mí, en especial por mí. Los clientes, muchas de las casas donde yo esté vendiendo son clientes de enfrente, de ahí mismo, de las casas, de los departamentos y ellos me han dicho a mí, nos han dicho también a mis compañeros, porque hay más vendedores ahí, que es bueno que esto esté pasando en Baldwin Park porque antes no había, entonces, y ellos no tienen que salir a otras ciudades a hacerlo. Porque de todos modos, si nosotros no estamos aquí, ellos van a salir a otras ciudades. Ellos van a salir a otras ciudades y eso es lo que ellos nos han dicho a nosotros. Entonces, yo no sé, sí, ahorita con el Instagram, si me pongo en la rica, me pongo en la oli, me pongo en la main, con el Instagram, con las redes sociales, la gente va a seguir llegando. Entonces, lo que nosotros quisiéramos que si, nosotros estamos dispuestos a contribuir con ustedes y trabajar con el estado de acuerdo con las leyes de salubridad y pues hacer lo que ustedes nos dicen, pero si nos dejaran trabajar, yo no sé, si podían designar alguna, algún lugar, ciertos días. Nosotros no trabajamos todo el día, solo trabajamos tres horas.
I'm gonna speak for myself, but I know that in the residential area that I work in, a lot of the customers tell us that it is a good thing. It's a good thing that we are there because they don't always have, I guess, this type of service available to them. And so I think they believe that this is a good, it's a good thing that we're there because even when you prohibit us to be or ban in the area, through social media, there are ways to get people who actually find us. So essentially, people, the people, that very same people will find us elsewhere. And so again, I reiterate my willingness to work with you and to also work with the Department of Public Health and adhere to any rules and regulations you may come up with, maybe perhaps, you know, coming up with a certain number of days that we can ban and that sort of thing. Adelante.
Este ya, este por último, pues es todo lo que yo quiero decirles y pues, si a la gente no, si la mayoría de la gente no nos quisiera, pues yo pienso que la mayoría de la gente no nos comprará. Entonces, las pruebas están allí y pues nosotros estamos en la mejor disposición de que ustedes nos ayuden, que escuchen nuestro voz y eso es todo. Muchas gracias.
Again, I believe that if people did not want to support us or that if they didn't want us there, they wouldn't support us. So yeah, we would love for you to support us and to help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Elias Flores has a question. And I believe, necesita intérprete señor Flores?
I'm gonna try in English. Apologies if I say anything wrong, not English, not my language. But I'm gonna try that. I just asked, I just got a question, actually. I've been sitting here for Baldwin Park over 35 years. I never went to the police window for any issue. Pretty much, like a week ago, I went to the police and they said, this is not criminal, so nothing we can do by you to help you and I understand that. I went to the second floor over here and then this day and actually they say that's also, we cannot help you pretty much. I came here actually and I said, okay, pretty much I understand, I need a lawyer for my situation. But my question is this, actually, when my neighbor come and on a place and I got information that some corporation buy the property. So when he come and actually they're gonna cut those trees. I believe this and his property, he got a right to cut those trees. They are in his property, they belong to them, that's my understanding. But I went up, those trees, they got so many beehives in there. And him properly decide to kill those animals. I think this is something different. And the process, when he does the project, hurt me. I don't know, I am in my house doing my own business. We live in over twenty-something years with those beehives in there. We never bothered, I see my neighbor, they never got any problem with those animals. I think it's a dissonant, we had to build homes, we had to make a room for humans, but there had to be a way to remove animals or to go away. To me, that's wrong. To me, that's criminal. I'm sorry, I never bothered come here over 35 years, but to me, this is, they need attention somehow. I can't take care myself, I can get a lawyer and suit, but I were the owner because the contractor, they don't give me any information at all. I can take care myself, but somebody had to take care and think by those animals. It's all I gotta say for now. Do you guys need any information about that or anything? My name is Elias Flores and I'm a resident and my address is 4147 Harlan Avenue on Baldwin Park. And this issue pretty much is next to my home. Thank you.
Can you get his phone number? If you can give your phone number to Ron back there, please.
I think my phone number, my email and everything.
Give it to him in the back. You can talk to Ron right there. Thank you so much. Yes. We have three phone calls, speakers who requested to speak tonight.
The first is Kiana Martinez. Hi, Kiana. This is the city of Baldwin Park. You're requested to speak during council communications. Hi, your time starts now.
Hello, this is Kiana, resident of Baldwin Park. I'm going to comment on agenda item number 14, I believe. I don't know if you are gonna bring it up today, but it was around updating the rent stabilization ordinance. I think I had spoken to some of the city council members before about, about including certain things. So we do want to know about an update on the rent freeze so that our tenants can be clear that there is a rent freeze at this time. I think it's important as well to continue the local emergency because we're still in a unprecedented economic crisis and people are still not able to afford their rent and there are no other state or county protections for non-payment of rent due to a COVID-19 financial hardship. Our families are still struggling with that and so we think that we should extend that. I know we also talked about turning off services, so like utilities. I think we have, I have mentioned that before in a previous council meeting about including that, some penalty for shutting off utilities and services like that for rent-controlled units, for everybody, but especially for rent-controlled units. Folks at LA Voice and the tenant groups on, tenants we worked with on Franger and different streets like that have spoken to us as well about including other types of housing in the rent stabilization ordinance such as condominium, duplexes and triplexes. In other rent control ordinances, they are included. So not single-family homes, but sometimes they do include duplexes and triplexes at the minimum. So I think that will be good to include as well. And yeah, and just anything else that we can do to talk to the tenants, to hear from them about what the issues are. Again, that's the most important thing that we need to do. And of course, the only other thing would be with the talking about an anti-harassment ordinance as well and getting legal representations to our residents because over 90% of cases that have legal representation win. So that's very important to us and that will be my comment for today. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ront Bidian. Mayor, there was no answer. Would you like me to try that again or skip?
You can try one more time and then you can go to the next.
All right, there was no answer. The next speaker is Beatriz Sandoval.
All right, there was no answer. The next speaker is Beatriz Sandoval.
Good evening, City Council, the Baldwin Park mayor and council members. I'm here calling to support, actual support called on to prohibit the sale of flavored tobacco products. I think prohibiting the sale of flavored tobacco is the first step to protect the health of the youth and children and especially those who are students. And the students who work, also the students who work from the school to home. And I know that that outreach job in the coalition did because now many parents are aware that how much damage made tobacco flavors to their children. And it's good as best, as the first good as best and we need to work together to keep these children safe of these cigarettes. And also, I want to bring my opinion and also I'd like to humbly ask you to establish simple application and follow up the state laws about street vendors. The vendors bring many benefits to our community, like income for our families. Also, bring culture to the new generation of immigrants from all over the world. So, also, this is a beautiful way to connect us as neighbors. I remember exactly two years ago when I moved from one condo to other place to live and I go to eat outside in the corner, eat some tacos. And I meet the, my neighbors and they, we have a great conversation. And not only talking about the delicious, but the tacos, but also about the building where we live. And we make great connection. So, street vendors or the food on the streets, that's part of the culture, not only about Mexicans or Latinos. This is a part of the culture of many, many others countries. So, this is a beautiful, gives the other communities and other cultures, bring to our neighborhood. So, I encourage you and also I ask you again, humbly, to establish more applications.
Mayor, those are all the speakers that we know of.
Great. Thank you, city clerk. So, at this point, if there's anybody who didn't fill out the card and is looking to speak, now would be your time. Looking that nobody else is looking to speak at this moment, I will close the public communication. Thank you for that. Then, I think, a student that goes to Cal State Fullerton. If you were to ask everybody here, their top three, you would probably incite the biggest fight. So, it's probably best for you to reach out to every single council member, you can include myself, independently via email and they will answer your question that way. And you can even set up a meeting with them if they're willing to do so, okay? And so, at this point, we will move on to.
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yes, council, uh, Mayor Portem, go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, I wanna thank all the speakers that came out and speak in regards to their items. It's greatly appreciated. I like to hear everybody's thoughts and opinions on the items that we have on the agenda. I wanna ask Sam on the streetlights and bumps of where Ms. Vargas is talking about, I know exactly what she's talking about. I don't know if you've done an assessment in that area, but it is a very busy area where students are crossing the street. It is very dangerous. I don't know if it's a possibility like they did across from Ceravista where you did the flashing lights for students can cross and maybe make an assessment of what can be done in that particular area because it is a major crossing area for our students there. I also want to bring up the taco situation. I know it's an ongoing conversation that we are definitely looking for solutions. Our goal is to be able to help the vendors and we do want everything done in a proper way. We want health code to be, to be the process of it because it is important that health codes are being followed. So, be assured that we are looking into this situation. We wanna do the best, make the best decisions for our community as well as for those vendors that are seeking to make extra money for their families. We completely understand that. So, we wanna make it fair. There is an ordinance that there shouldn't be certain type of vending and that you should have a license and health, but they're not very clear. So, we are working on that to make sure it's clear and to see how, what better way we can help you to be able to obtain these licenses and these permits so that you can have your business in the city of Baldwin Park. And I like the idea of providing an area, actually brought it up a few minutes, meetings ago, our last meeting, where you can do your vending away from, I think the ideal would be a grade from actual businesses so you don't disturb their business on certain days. So, it's not every day of the week. So, we're looking into everything. Please be assured of that. And we're looking for the benefit of everyone. So, besides that, I don't have any other comments. Thank you. Thank you again for your comments.
So, Mayor Portem brought a good point and then I just wanna double check. Sam, can you make sure you have the ladies' information regarding the stop signs and potential speed deterrents?
Yes, Mayor, I believe we've already collected that data. I think Esther was able to speak with her and collect that information. Thank you.
Okay. And then I guess we should just be kind of clear on that, that it does take a couple of months sometimes to kind of go through the studies and the process to put those things in place.
Yes.
It's gonna take a little bit of time.
We will program a warrant study for a signal and/or a stop sign. And if that doesn't pan out, then we can look at other options like Councilwoman Avila was talking about with the high visibility crosswalk lighting.
Great, thank you. And then Mayor Portem, you also brought up a good point. So, tomorrow, City of Valmont is actually starting their weekly, I think it's called Flavor Fest, and that is where they have a designated area for street vendors. And I believe this may be in partnership with the county health department. So, this might be something to look into and something that can guide us in the future. I know that people bring up the ordinances and I've always brought up the ordinances and the history of Baldwin Park. And to me, a lot of the ordinances that have been in place in Baldwin Park have had some sort of anti-Hispanic sentiment to them and that being one of those is the targeting of food vendors here in our area. One of the things that concerns me the most is that sometimes people have reported that they feel that they, that staff is being encouraged to go and not only cite these vendors, but also dispose of their food, which is, to me, something humiliating and degrading and completely unnecessary. So, as we move forward, we did put a pause on this and that's something similar to a moratorium, which is completely normal while we move along. So, we are working on this, but we don't wanna move too fast and just pass something just because we can. Ordinances take a lot of discussion and take a lot of critical thinking. So, that is the process that we're in currently. And then, yeah, hold on. And then somebody else mentioned homelessness, so something that we've been talking a lot about here and something that we've been focusing on heavily. And I believe our tiny home village is actually opening up in a matter of weeks. So, for anybody who is new to the homeless issue, there is something called Martin versus Boise and that is a lawsuit that has since been upheld by the Supreme Court, ruling that you cannot simply ask the homeless to pick up and keep it moving. That constitutes inhumane punishment and that is a violation of the Eighth Amendment. Therefore, in order to ask these individuals to get off the sidewalk, we have to provide them services. So, that is another important topic and that is something that else, that we are working on. Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. I did wanna mention that I have received calls regarding the street vendor issue. And I received calls from businesses and residents and I don't, I don't think this is an anti-Latino movement. I think what it is, is, you know, we do wanna, we do want to enforce laws and we wanna be in compliance with the county and with the state laws. And we do have an existing policy that, according to our last meeting, it is in compliance with county and state. And I don't think that there's anything anti-Latino about that. It's simply, we're trying to comply. And we're also wanting to be respectful of our business community. You know, they, they go through the permits, they go through county health. They work with the city to get all the approvals that are needed. And so, I understand their frustration when they're expressing that, you know, people are setting up shop kind of close to their business and without the permits. This has been an issue for me with regard to public health. And I am very compassionate when it comes to any entrepreneur wanting to put food on the, on the table for their family. It's a story of my family as well. So, I am very compassionate and I understand what, you know, these businessmen and women are trying to do. I think that in hearing the community's response with, you know, the lackadaisical approach that we've taken on enforcing the existing policy and allowing street vendors to come into our city and kind of just shut, set up shop. I think that we're being a little irresponsible in that we are telling the community that the city allows for this operation and we don't know if that operation has the right permits. So, I wanted to take a little bit of a firmer position this evening as compared to what I did the last time. I think, one, it is important to be compassionate. I don't wanna see anybody's product being thrown in the trash at any point. And, but I don't think that it's unreasonable to comply with the county and state laws. And so, I think it's important for us to enforce the policy that we have or to, you know, just quickly move and see how we can comply in a way that works for our city. But second, we've also talked about providing a path for, you know, some of the entrepreneurs that do wanna get the permits and have found that process to be cumbersome. So, I think it's important that we enforce, you know, what we have on the books and that we start thinking about programs that can provide greater access to entrepreneurs in our community, including the street vendors. That's my position and that's important for me to express because of the conversations I've had with business community, folks, and also residents. I also wanted to take the opportunity sadly to close our council meeting on behalf of a good friend, Mayor Brian Urias, who passed suddenly and his services were today. Unfortunately, we extend our condolences. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Councilmember Damian.
Yeah, I just had a couple of comments. First, I wanted to welcome our Parks and Rec Director Manny Carrillo back. Manny, we missed you. We're happy to have you back. We're gonna be bothering you to put you back to work. Second, I wanted to thank the Baldwin Park Police Department for their trick-or-treat event last week on Thursday. I hadn't seen so many children in such a long time, but it was really great to see the community come out and enjoy this event and looking forward to the Toys with the Cops event coming up next month in December. Lastly, I would like to close on behalf of Roy Baca, who passed away last week on Monday after losing his battle to ALS. Roy was a longtime resident of the city of Baldwin Park, coached Little League here in the city. And I wanna send my condolences to him and the Baca family. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Damian.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. Again, just wanna echo, you know, the closing remarks of our former colleague and also personal friend of Brian Urias, you know, with the city of Duarte. He was actually a resident of Baldwin Park and, you know, I almost, I almost wanna call him homegrown. His family had been here for many, many years and was a, you know, proud champion of our community. In fact, he was one of the, you know, leader that made sure that, you know, he went to the San Gabriel Tribune and essentially threatened them without, with essentially the sponsorship that they were paying when that newspaper was referring to our city with a gang moniker. And it was as a result of Councilmember Garcia and others on the council at the time and others, you know, working with him and, you know, trying to use the bully pulpit of money to make them change their mind because up until then, they continued to do that and it did, did that, that type of practice for quite some time. And as you can imagine, nobody wants to have their city referenced in the newspaper by a gang moniker. That just speaks a little bit of who he was and what he did, not only for our city, for our region, when he spent a little bit of time on the Upper San Gabriel Water District and then from there, you know, he worked obviously with Hilda Salisa's office, you know, partnered with us at various events and most recently at one of our, at our, you know, food distribution, I think that we had back in February or March of this year. So, he's always been active in our community and been very supportive of the San Gabriel Valley. And obviously, at the age of 40, it's a tremendous loss for many of us that have personally known him and, you know, as, and just generally as a, as a colleague. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. And I echo those sentiments. You know, I got to meet him not too long ago. I met him when I first got sworn in, a little bit before that. He called me to introduce himself and let me know that he was part of the, of Hilda Salisa's office and he was very courteous and he was very easy to work with and very communicative. So, I agree that it is a tremendous loss for everybody at such an early age. Yes, Mayor Portem?
I wanna add one more thing. Catherine, I don't know if you reached out to the Baldwin Park School District. Maybe they can add your information on their webpage. The Storytime for preschoolers, I think it's amazing. Well, everything that you mentioned, but I think parents are always looking for activities for their children. So, you may, they may be able to add your information on the district webpage. I also wanna give my condolences to the Baca and the Urias family. I didn't know Mr. Urias very well. I had few conversations with him here and there. But I do give my condolences to the family as well as to the Baca family. Thank you.
Mayor, and if I can follow up to those comments. You know, during the recession, when we were very, you know, challenged with revenues and with finances here at the city, it didn't, you know, I mean, it didn't stop our business of delivering service. And a constituent had approached the city council about Walnut Creek Park and it was, at the time, a passive park like it is today, but it didn't have the improvements that we see today. And, you know, Mayor Urias at the time was an ally in the region. I think he was on the upper district water board and he knew that I had been advocating for improvements to this park, but money was tight. So, you know, he was aware of environmental groups in the region that were interested in investing in parks in the San Gabriel Valley and he was kind enough to remember that that was a priority for the city, one that we couldn't fund at the time, and he put us in touch with the environmental groups. And I remember in December, I think it was of 2012, we met at the park and Manny Carrillo was there, Maria Moreno and staff. We walked the park with the environmental groups. Brian was there because he made that connection and it was important to him. And from there, we were able to get seed money from the environmental groups to begin the improvements. We were able to leverage that with, at the time, the supervisor's office, Gloria Molina, and thanks to Teresa Viejas and then continue to leverage that. And so, I just wanted to share that because it was a small but powerful gesture and I feel like it represented a lot of the work that our colleague. And I feel like it represented a lot of the work that our colleague, um, you know, he, he took on. And it was his approach, so I just wanted to mention that and, and express appreciation.
Mayor?
Yes, City Clerk.
Thank you. I'd like to also express my condolences to the Urias family. I've known Brian for many, many years. He actually was a planning commissioner for the city of Baldwin Park for several years, uh, back, um, uh, a few years ago. And, um, he was the exceptional public servant. He was always a strong advocate for the people, always working for the San Gabriel Valley. Representing the people, working hard and it was truly a shock and we were saddened to hear of his passing because. He touched so many people in a positive manner. I'm not talking hundreds, I'm talking thousands and thousands of people, just with the work that he did. Um, and, um, and, and of course his passion for public service, so he will be tremendously missed. And I can only imagine what his mother is going to be going through because she, that was her baby. That was her baby and, um, and I just, I feel terrible for her. And, uh, just wanted to express my condolences. I had an opportunity to attend today. His services for a while and, um, he has a really wonderful family and, uh, it was just heartbreaking. Um, on another note, I want to acknowledge, uh, my intern who is here today. She is, uh, Isabel Pinedo. She's also a student of Cal State Fullerton and I must be the same teacher, ma- uh, same professor told her to come to a council meeting. Uh, she's working with a group at school and one of the projects they're working on is. Uh, a healthy community, so I told her, you picked the right community. Because item number nine is one of the items I shared with her, what was going on, uh, with that particular item, so. She's here today, so I just wanted to acknowledge her. Say hi, Isabel. Thank you.
Great, very neat. So at this moment, we move on to public, uh, sorry, consent calendar. Uh, so if anyone is looking to pull any items, now is the time. I'd like to pull item number four. Is there any other items councils were looking to pull? Okay, so at this moment, I'll make a motion to pass items number one through twelve, excluding item number four. Can I get a second?
Second.
City Clerk, roll call.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Avila? Councilmember Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So I should have asked this question, uh, Sam, earlier during the presentation. But you said it would be, uh, fairly quickly installed, uh, so we approve them today. Is there a timeline?
Yes, so we're looking at, um. Having everything sorted out so that we can start installation within, uh, four to five weeks depending on. Um, the, um, graphic art that we're going to be placing on it, um, so. Uh, we're looking at about a month to a month and a half.
Neat, very neat. And then, and then, so you said we're kind of like in a pilot phase, so how long and then, so does it come? Will it come back after a certain amount of time so that we look at whether we want to continue this and increase it or increase it or et cetera?
Yeah, so we're, we're in a, a proof of, uh, concept phase. Um, we are, uh, we have taken on the, um, advertising program, managing it in-house. So in coordination with the kiosk, we, we want to be able to develop a, a program, so this is what we're looking at. We thought it was very interesting and we thought it would be a good fit for what we're doing. So if that works out, we're looking at about a six to eight month timeframe to understand. How the signs are performing and if, if they're being used and all that, and then maybe, uh, uh, expand to other locations.
Great, thank you. Well, thank you, Sam. I, I know you got this done fairly quickly. Uh, you know, we're right there with Covina. We'll be one of the first in the county. Very excited for that, so thank you, Sam. I'm, I'm very appreciative of this. So I'll just make a motion to pass item number four. Can I get a second?
Second, thank you, Sam.
City Clerk, roll call.
Thank you. Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Avila? Councilmember Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yep.
Great, thank you for that. So at this moment, we will move on to the public hearing and that is a request to the city council from the planning commission. On an amendment to update the city count, the city of Baldwin Park Municipal Code relating to the new state law for accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. Um, so at this moment, I will officially open the public hearing or Ron DeJabi presentation?
Yes, if you'd like me to present.
Yes, go ahead.
Switch it up or the PowerPoint presentation. Hang tight, Ron, I'm working on it. Apologies, Ron, I need, uh, Mark to send me the email again. Hang tight.
No problem, David, thank you.
Thank you, David. Um, as you recall, good evening, Mayor, council staff. Um, as you recall, co- about a month or two ago, um, had a presentation on the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. Um, that was reviewed by the State Department of, uh, Housing and Community Development, so. During that time, we have vetted an ordinance that's in compliance, um, uh, with state law. And again, I just want to, uh, go over the, uh, changes, uh, in the ordinance. And then also present some slides, uh, in response to some of the questions that had, uh, come up, uh, during that, uh, study session. A couple of months back. Next slide, please. Next slide. So again, this amendment is, uh, to address the various state laws that have been passed in the past two years. Again, just to, um, uh, just to, uh, refresh on what's happened with our ADU, uh, ordinances. Um, since, uh, our last change, which was in two thousand eighteen. Um, one significant change, one significant, um, requirement in that, uh, ADU ordinance that was passed. Was it prohibited ADUs on three, in three areas. Uh, areas, uh, that were located on substandard streets, within three hundred feet of a school bus stop and also. In areas, uh, that required permit parking. Um, again, over the years, ADU laws has been revised to improve its effectiveness at creating, um, for the production of housing. Uh, given the housing crisis that the state has been, um, uh, in, uh, in. Currently and in the past couple of years. Next slide. Again, as I, uh, mentioned, there were three areas that were per- uh, prohibited ADUs. Um, this change in the ADU law essentially, um, prohibited, uh, cities throughout California from prohibiting. ADUs if it could not make the following findings and one of the big findings is, uh, ADUs that were located in, uh, high fire, uh, hazard areas. Uh, and also making findings for inadequate water and sewer service. This was, um. Discuss extensively with the state and trying to make that finding, uh, at least on one of the prohibitions. Uh, which was on substandard streets. Um, we had, again, extensive conversations and unfortunately, uh, they, they would not budge, uh, on. Continuing that prohibition, so this ordinance before you would allow, uh, ADUs throughout the city. Uh, in, in, in summary, uh, the next, uh, change is that, um. It prohibits local agencies from establishing a maximum size of an ADU for less than eight hundred fifty square feet. Or a thousand square foot ADU that contains more than one bedroom, uh, and requires approval of a statewide exemption. Uh, of up to eight hundred square feet, no more than sixteen feet in height and four feet, uh, side yard and rear yard setbacks, so the, this. New state law reduced those setbacks, um, and especially indicated that, uh, we had to approve, no matter if it was over lot coverage. Uh, landscaping coverage, FAR, uh, we had, have to allow on a single family residential property in eight hundred. At least an eight hundred square foot ADU. Next slide, please. And again, here, uh, the changes of the existing, um, uh, required ADUs and also what we're proposing. So that way it was in compliance with state law. And again, uh, just to highlight those changes, uh, allowing at least an eight hundred and fifty square foot ADU. Uh, with one, uh, bedroom or less and has, have to allow for at least a thousand square foot ADU. Uh, with more than one, uh, with one bedroom. Uh, so it is, we continue the sliding scale based on lot size, uh, but we have to allow for those, uh, size, uh, ADUs. And again, the, the larger the lot will, uh, be able to take advantage of the largest accessory dwelling unit of a thousand two hundred square feet. Next slide. Uh, the ADU law clarifies, um, that, uh. It's created through the conversion of a garage, uh, carport covered parking structure, replacement of off-street parking, uh, spaces cannot be required. Uh, and again, as I mentioned, i- in the study session presentation, that, uh. One unique thing about Baldwin Park is that we cannot require parking for these accessory dwelling units because. Uh, in looking at bus stops and transit centers where, are within a half mile, um, of an ADU. We cannot require parking. Uh, another change is it reduces the maximum ADU and junior accessory dwelling application review time from a hundred and twenty to sixty days. It also clarifies public transit, uh, as I mentioned, public, uh, uh, bus stops. Uh, and also major transit such as, uh, the, uh, MetroLink. And essentially means transportation that charges a set fee, runs or runs on a fixed route, uh, and it's available, uh, to the public. Next slide. It allows both an ADU and a junior accessory dwelling unit on a residential lot, uh, previously allowed only one. So with this, uh, in the end, in a residential, single-family lot, you could have three units, that being the primary unit. Uh, an accessory dwelling unit and a junior accessory dwelling unit. The one unique thing about the junior accessory dwelling unit is that that is, uh, taking advantage by converting existing. Single-family residential, um, livable space, no more than five hundred square feet within the primary home. Uh, the other is ADUs less than seven hundred and fifty square feet are exempt from, uh, development, from the city charging development impact fees. Junior accessory dwelling units, uh, are limited to one, uh, per residential lot with the single-family residence and. Uh, junior accessory dwelling units are not allowed, uh, in accessory structures. Has to be within the primary home and that could be the first story or second story. Next slide. And again, uh, we have to allow at least one ADU, uh, to be created within, uh, the non-livable space within a multifamily. So these standards are specific to multifamily. Um, and those include converting, uh, areas not limited to storage rooms, boiler rooms, passageways, attics, basements. Or garages. And then the other change there is for multifamily is allow up to twenty-five percent of the existing multifamily dwellings that exist on the property. Uh, within the structure that, um. May also allow not more than two ADUs on the lot, uh, that are detached. So it's converting no more than twenty-five percent of existing non-livable space of the multifamily structure. Or allow up to two detached accessory dwelling units, uh, on the property. Next slide. It also eliminates, uh, all owner occupancy requirements by local agencies. Uh, for ADUs approved between January first, twenty twenty and January first, twenty twenty-five. Uh, this does not include, uh, junior accessory dwelling units, so I imagine in twenty twenty-five, uh, there may be in a, uh, another bill that would. That would, uh, address that, uh, or not, but we'll be keeping a close eye on that. Um, another big change on the ADUs again is HOAs. Uh, they're essentially known void if they, uh, prohibit the construction of ADUs, so conversions of garages within. Uh, homeowner HOAs, uh, is possible, uh, through this new state law. Uh, it also allows the local agency to count the ADUs and this was covered during our housing element, uh, study sessions that these ADUs and the junior accessory dwelling units. And count towards our RENA numbers and again, um, as you recall, th- those RENA numbers, uh, RENA required numbers for the next eight years. For the city of Baldwin Park is about two thousand and one units. So, um, those ADUs and JDUs can count towards meeting those, uh, re- that requirement. Um, and lastly, another big change here is, uh, manufactured homes, uh, ADUs, uh, under state law. Um, a manufactured home can be counted as an ADU and can be placed on a single-family residential property. Next slide. So, um, in response to some of the questions that the council had given at the study session, what we've done here is, um. Is itemized the permit fees, construction costs and property taxes and the big, big item there was property taxes. Uh, myself, along with staff, learned, uh, while we're going through this, uh, how property taxes are assessed. Um, so for example, what we did is we did, um, an example of, uh, garage conversion. Um, so the county ass- assessor's office will assess the va- the added value to the property. Um, and here, you have a garage conversion of fifty-three thousand, a little over fifty-three thousand dollars. And then you have permit fees, uh, that run approximately about four thousand dollars. And again, these are approximations, these are not exact, but we took, uh, three key examples that actually submitted for, um, for a, uh, an ADU of this size. Um, and then applied the property tax. Um, so for, for a, a garage conversion, the additional property tax, it would be an added, um. Uh, on an annual, uh, basis would be five hundred and thirty-five, uh, dollars. And then the ci- city's share of that five hundred and thirty-five dollar increase in property tax to the homeowner. Uh, the city would be receiving, uh, about fifty-one dollars per year. Again, at the bottom, I put an asterisk, uh, that that levy is based on, uh, uh, the city shares is based off a nine, nine. Give or take about a nine percent, um, uh, calculated, um. Uh, property tax, uh, that would be owed to the city. And then the, uh, property tax is based on the one percent general tax levy, uh, mandated by Prop thirteen. So it's taking essentially one percent of that fifty-three thousand dollars, um, and that would be the increase to the property owner. And then for a six hundred square foot ADU, uh, generally about eighty thousand dollar added value to the property. Uh, the homeowner would, um, be responsible for eight hundred and three dollars. Um, added to their tax, uh, bill and then the city's share would be seventy-six dollars and fifty-five cents. And then the largest, um, allowed would be a thou- uh, twelve hundred square foot ADU. At a hundred and sixty thousand dollar plus added value to the property. Um, and that brings in an additional property tax of a thousand six hundred and six, uh, dollars. The city's share, uh, that would be received would be a hun- about a hundred and fifty-three, uh, dollars.
Ron, really quickly?
Yes.
Uh, how is the value determined, say on a, a garage of fifty-three thousand, uh, eighty thousand and, you know, just, you know, obviously just. The, the over, the overview on that and one sixty, like, how's, who determines the value of that?
So it's based on, uh, good question, so that's based on, that's, uh, one key info- uh, information that we need that is provided by. Uh, the architect, the contractor, when evaluating the construction costs and value of the accessory dwelling unit. Again, that every- everything from fixtures to building materials. And again, as I mentioned in the last study session, some of these ADUs can get really fancy. They're just like, you know, our primary homes. Um, and some can be very simple. For the garage conversions, just in taking the calculation here. Um, the most simplest garage conversion was about twenty-five thousand dollars. So take one percent of that twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, value added to the property. Uh, based on the types of, uh, improvements they're making it to be a livable, uh, unit. Um, uh, that is how that, that valuation is, is provided.
No, I appreciate it, especially with the garage conversions and, you know, that. No, I appreciate it, especially with the garage conversions and, you know, that we have with other folks that, you know, now it's, you know, the additional burden on a resident to convert it, you know, legally, is not as scary as we, you know, would would think, right? As long as they keep the, as you just kind of outlined, keep it within, you know, reasonable or, you know, within a whatever budget they want. But as you mentioned, the more value that they add to it, whether it's, you know, granite, you know, flooring and things like that, really start increasing. So that's a decision that's that's being driven by the the individual who's doing the the conversions or whatever they might be doing. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Right. The other one, I know that on the the 1,200 square foot, we we applied a hundred and example, a real example, and that was 160. But we have seen that they've gone up to $200,000 on the largest on that 1,200. So again, really simply, again, like as I mentioned, we learned while we were going through this and understanding how that that how the additional property tax is calculated, made much more sense in how how it impacts property owners. Next slide. So between 2019 and 2021, as I covered in that study session, we provided that data. And so 40 ADUs during that time period were submitted for permits, and that went straight to plan check. And then 68 garage conversions submitted for permits as well. And then during that time period, about 63 ADUs were submitted for planning review in 2020. And then in 2021, alone this year, we received 75 ADUs for review. That's quite, quite a bit. And we expect that going into 2022 and 2023, it's definitely going to increase. Next slide. So in response to the comments that were given at that one study session, what we essentially did here, and I want to thank Sam for helping us put this together. Without him, we wouldn't have been able to show this this GIS map, essentially showing in red all the garage conversions where they're located. And those are indicated by the red dot. And then the blue dot shows you all the ADUs that were submitted in 2020. And then the green dot shows those homeowners that that went through the design review process that actually actually moved forward in that second phase of submitting to the building department for plan check. And then the purple dot shows ADUs that were submitted in 2021. You can see they're pretty much scattered throughout the city in the residential zones on the north side and also in the center and also on the southern portion of Baldwin Park. So this is a great map. I want to thank Sam for putting that together, put a lot of work into it. And I appreciate it. Next slide. So the code enforcement cases, this is another request from council. We were able to create a map showing this, is that again, between the period of 2019 and 2021, it was a total of 93 cases cited for illegal garage conversions. And so we dug deeper, as you requested, two of those took advantage of the ADU law, of those 93 cases that were cited. And then 25 are currently ongoing. And of those 25, we know that four took advantage of the ADU law. And those four consist of two garage conversions and two new ADUs. One thing I want to make note of is that those 93 cases that were cited for garage conversions, really interesting, when we put this map together, it all kind of made sense, is that 93 of those cases that were cited, 93 of those were were closed. So what that means is code enforcement was successfully able to work with the property owner, either make a decision on either going back to its original, the structure, the legal structure that was converted, of converting it back to its original form and being able to essentially close the case. What that also tells us is, as we've discussed in our past study session, is is capital, is that not a lot of people have the capital to move forward and want to get the garage conversion legally reviewed by the city. Because that tells you alone, out of those cases, we're really getting six out of that 93. So that's a good thing, especially, it would be kind of lopsided if we had 93 cases and, you know, more than half were still open. But that what this tells us is that the city was able to successfully work with the property owner and and dealing with the issue.
Ron, I have a question. When they find an illegal garage conversion and the city goes in, and let's say the owners, they want to go ahead and convert it to make it legal, do they do an assessment of how it's already done? And or do they make, knock everything down and then start from scratch? Or or can they assess it and and determine, okay, the electrical is fine, this is fine, this is fine, but you have to fix this?
Right.
How does that work?
Yeah. In the best case scenario, sometimes they have to do minimal changes. And in some cases, they have to do some pretty extensive modifications and have to replace, you know, for example, wiring or light fixtures or plumbing fixtures in order to meet the California Building Code. But it varies. But we do not automatically say you have to you automatically do something. Essentially, we help them and assisting them, telling them that they would have to consult with an architect or designer to assist them in making sure that whatever was built illegally, what can be salvaged and what cannot. But there is gonna, we do let them know that there is gonna be some modifications to the structure, if any.
Okay, so so they they seek an architect to look at what they already have?
Right.
That's what you're saying?
Yes.
And then from then, they submit the plans to you?
Correct.
And then you review to make sure it's up to code with our city?
Correct.
How about how much do architects cost?
Oh, they vary. You know what we're hearing nowadays with COVID? Sometimes they're denying work because they're so busy and they've their prices have significantly gone up. I've seen somewhere they charge, you know, up to $5,000. But it's just a sign of the times.
So for some of these people, and that's why they close the case, and they decide just to get rid of the illegal garage because it's just more expensive for them to make it legal than to continue the process to make it legal.
Right. Next slide. So that concludes staff's presentation. And again, before you, this puts a a close on the chapter in working with the State Department of Housing Community Development and getting this ordinance done. It is staff's recommendation that the council adopt this ordinance related to municipal code changes related to accessory dwelling units.
Ron?
Yes.
I just want to say thank you for the presentation and for doing all this homework. I know you were diligently listening to the council's requests and incorporating it into this final presentation. So thank you for that. And I'm so glad that we've been able to quantify what the permit, you know, the dollar amount for the permits, and also what the improvements would cost the property owner, you know, based on the county assessment. And I think all that information will help us as we look at, you know, how can we incentivize some of these property owners from converting their illegal garages into the ADU and moving in that direction. And I'm also very hopeful that there will be other programs and funding sources that could help us to figure out and, you know, create those solutions. So I want to say thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. My pleasure. And the data that we created, thankfully, Sam, it's already in a database. So we're going to be keeping track of it. So that way, when this comes up again, we're able to pull it and be able to provide that that data, current data.
Awesome.
Great. Thank you. At this moment, I will officially open the public hearing for those looking to speak in favor of item 13. Looking that nobody is looking to speak, I will now open the, I will now officially open the public hearing for those opposing item number 13. And seeing that nobody is, was there somebody looking to speak, chief deputy?
Mayor, we had Beatriz.
Oh, yes. Okay, go ahead.
Hola, Beatriz. Esto es para el, for the accessory dwelling units and your, starts now, go ahead.
Thank you, City Council. Again, this is Beatriz. I am calling in support of this item. I think this is a great idea to bring laws to address solution for our housing crisis. And also for many of the, this is for many of the neighbors and residents who have struggled to pay their loans or pay their house, or they have to, they want to have their children in home and grow up their grandchildren in the same, in rows or in the same area. So thank you, the staff for bringing this presentation. This is wonderful. And hopefully, you'll support this item. And also, I'd like to talk to, I don't know, is there some space for talking about the number 13, or also to talk to about the main needs for the, for the ordinance, uh, ordinance 1447? I don't know if this is the space too?
No, I'm sorry, Beatriz, that that's.
It's only for the 13. Okay. Thank you, Lulu. I'm in support. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Chief Deputy, is that the only person?
Yes, mayor.
Great. So at this moment, I will move to close, to officially close the public hearing regarding item number 13. And I will make a motion to pass item number 13. I request the City Council from the Planning Commission on an amendment to update the city of Baldwin Park Municipal Code relating to new state law for accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. Can I get a second?
Second.
So I believe Mayor Protem second and first. Either way, chief, sorry, City Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, thank you. Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Avila? Councilmember Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Great.
Mayor, they have, we have to conduct the first reading of the title.
Yeah, so, I request the City Council for the Planning Commission on an amendment to update the city of Baldwin Park?
No, sorry, mayor, the title of the ordinance on the recommendation.
Ordinance 1464 entitled An Ordnance of the City Council of the City of Baldwin Park, California, amending the Baldwin Park Municipal Code title. Land usage chapter 153 zoning code sections 153.040.070, 153.070.020, 153.120.350, 153.120.360, and 153.120.370 relating to accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. And section 153.150.100 relating to tandem parking. Fair enough? That was item number 13. Okay. Well, then, at this point, I think we are good to move to the next report. Is that correct, chief deputy city clerk? Great. So at this moment, we have the reports of officers, and that's item number 14, consideration of amendment to the rent stabilization ordinance of the city of Baldwin Park to clarify certain provisions. And then is this an item you take as a city?
Thank you, mayor. Yes, the city attorney's office will present the staff report on this item. The city of Baldwin Park City Council adopted urgency ordinance number 1447 on December 4, 2019 to temporarily freeze rents for 120 days in the city of Baldwin Park to prohibit certain residential units from rent increases in excess of 3% in any 12-month period. And regulations and regulating the reasons landlords are permitted to terminate certain residential tendencies, also called just cause evictions. The changes to the ordinance 1447 proposed by staff addressed typographical errors in the ordinance and add terms to further strengthen the ordinance and clarify sections for the benefit of both tenants and landlords. The additional terms prohibit landlords from raising or instituting new fees for services that were included in the rent previously, such as water, electricity, and parking, in order to circumvent the rent increase cap of 3%. Ordinance 1447 does not have a separate eviction freeze, only a rent freeze, also called a rent moratorium. The rent moratorium ended on or about April 3, 2020. However, the city enacted a separate emergency eviction freeze due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. This local eviction freeze brought the city in line with statewide emergency orders related to eviction freezes. The state emergency order ended in September 30, 2020. The city's emergency order also ended September 30, 2020, because the city's emergency order is based on the state's emergency order, and the city only had authority pursuant to the state emergency order. Therefore, when the state emergency order was not extended, the city's emergency order ended as well. However, the LA County, however, LA County has now enacted a rent freeze ordinance that applies to the city of Baldwin Park and all incorporated cities in LA County. The LA County ordinance has a rent freeze and an eviction freeze with certain limitations. The registration fee of $28 per affected housing unit has remained unchanged and is expected to generate approximately $40,000 annually to reimburse the city for a portion of staff costs associated with the administration of the RSO. Staff intends to bring back a potential change on the registration fee, to increase that registration fee to come in more in line with the staff costs associated with the administration of the RSO. That's not part of these changes. The staff will be doing a study regarding that and then bringing back recommendations to you at a later time. The alternatives to the city are to select, is to select the table on these, select to enact this ordinance at the next meeting, or to make further changes and direct staff to bring back a proposed rent stabilization ordinance at the next meeting as well. This is not on the agenda for passing, but rather just an opportunity for the council to look at the changes that have been made, to make any changes, additional changes they may wish to add, or to provide staff additional direction to bring back for a first reading at the next city council meeting. That ends my report, mayor.
Thank you. Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Protem.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Robert, for that report. It clarifies things that have been happening in our city. And we have had residents come in stating that the landlords actually added these increases to the rent going around, not increasing the rent, but adding the utilities and so forth. Having the opportunity to add items or delete items to to this ordinance that we do have in place, I know we had discussed in the past Costa Hawkins Rental Housing Act of 1995. And we cannot add any units or properties that have been built 15 years, 15 years from now, before now. So I would like to go back to 2016 and add, and like to add all the condos and single-family homes to this ordinance, anything that built was built before 2006, and including mobile home parks. So that, I know we have a lot of residents living in single-family homes that have come across the problem, but they were not part of this. I'd like to add again, condos, family homes, and mobile homes that were built prior to 2016.
That is correct, Mayor Protem. So my understanding of the state law is that you cannot have rent increase or rent moratoriums for any units that were built within the last 15 years. The idea behind that is, you know, for The idea behind that is, you know, for new units, and what the state considers new units was in the last fifteen years, uh, the investors, the people that own those homes and rent them out, need to recoup their investments and recoup their capital costs, so rent controls cannot occur within that fifteen-year period. For units that are fifteen years or older, uh, state law does permit, uh, rent, um, control on those units. Currently, the city of Baldwin Park's rent control ordinance is from units prior to nineteen ninety-five. If you were to go to the state minimum, which is fifteen years, uh, then you would be looking at, uh, changing the ordinance to include all units built prior to two thousand and six, which is, I think, what you're, um, suggesting?
Yes.
Okay, um, certainly if that's the, uh, wish of the council, I can, uh, draft that up and bring that additional, uh, I, uh, clause back, uh, to the next meeting. I also hear you saying that you want to add condos, single-family homes, and the mobile homes to our current, uh, rent, uh, stabilization ordinance, is that also what you're asking?
Correct, and you may have to do a little more homework on the... A little bit different about that, I don't have it right in front of me, but, um, if you research homes, uh, to me, that we are in compliance with that, but for sure, the condos and...
Yes, I haven't researched that at all regarding condos, single-family homes, or mobile homes, so I want to look at that and make sure that, um, state law, uh, does not conflict with that. Of course, there are, uh, state laws related to, uh, rent stabilization and rent moratoriums, so I'll make sure that whatever we can do, I'll bring that option back to you at our next meeting.
Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, um, you know, thank you very much, uh, Mayor Protem for bringing those items up, uh, I have a concern in just moving forward with that, without, uh, you know, fully understanding, uh, you know, all the laws and everything else, but more importantly, uh, not doing the appropriate outreach with the single-family homeowners and the condo owners, um, you know, and duplex owners and so forth, and mobile homeowners. Uh, you know, as we've, as we did with the, with, uh, as we did this previously, uh, we did do an extensive outreach, um, so I'd like to at least take the opportunity, as we're going through the discussion, uh, that we reach out to homeowners, uh, you know, through the various methods that we have, uh, to get their input. Um, I think it would be, uh, it wouldn't be as trans, it would be, uh, non-transparent if we just moved forward, um, and implemented a, you know, a change in an ordinance without taking, uh, those necessary steps, and to get feedback, at that point, then, you know, I would certainly feel much more comfortable, uh, you know, looking at and reviewing all the recommendations, uh, that have, you know, that, uh, Mayor Protem has, has stated at this time, uh, but I think that is something that's important for us, um, as, you know, we have individuals, uh, you know, and I'm not talking about corporations, um, I'm talking about our, our residents, um, that, uh, you know, uh, many of them are good stewards, uh, but we just need to, you know, make them aware of, you know, what we're looking at doing, um, and get their, uh, input, um, as we do with, you know, with all type of, uh, ordinances, but specifically in and around this particular one, uh, thank you.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Councilmember Damian.
Yeah, did you, I just, just for clarification, did Vice Mayor state she wanted all units to be included, which are single-family residents, duplex, or multifamily residents, mobile homes, and condominiums?
The duplex, yes, duplex as well as the condominium.
And is that to abide with state law fifteen years, so any property built prior to two thousand and six?
Correct, and Robert is going to look into it to make sure that we are in compliance by putting in this request.
Yeah, I'm not completely sure on all of these items, uh, Councilmember Damian, so I'm hearing this for the first time tonight, I will need some time to look at this, uh, and to look at the laws that are in place, look at state law and see what exactly we can do as it relates to the request by Vice Mayor Avila.
Yeah, and I'd also like to take a look at, you know, the year prior to two thousand and six, we're talking about fifteen years, so, one of the things that concerns me about the fifteen years is that we have to look at what the current mortgage payment is for these people that purchased, maybe fifteen years ago, sixteen years ago. You know, it could be that they're, they're probably just offsetting, so maybe something within the year, maybe going back to two thousand, you know, a traditional mortgage, you're looking at about a thirty-year term finance, um, and I know, you know, most of the properties already, if you're going to two thousand, there's twenty-one years already, so we need to look at that as well. The reason why I say that is because obviously, we want to protect our tenants, and I, and I want to make sure that they're protected, not just in apartments, that they're protected in any place that they're living in, but we also have to take into consideration, some of these, uh, people that rely on, on their rental income to survive. Um, and the reason why I do say that is because I do have a couple of clients that are my tax clients, that own properties here in the city of Baldwin Park, and, you know, I've had conversations with them, I mean, they're very generous with the amount of rent that they're charging their tenants currently, and they're, you know, they're one of those tenants, landlords that are not taking advantage of the situation, but what would concern me there is, that if for any reason they were to be put in some type of rent control and the year is not, you know, equal with what their mortgage payment is, uh, we may end up harming them as well, so, I think that it would be good to explore all of these options and have a bigger discussion, um, and also involve our, our homeowners, and get feedback from them, so that we can bring them to the table and make a, uh, a better decision at that time as well.
Great, thank you, I think, so, I think the best thing to do is, we can take all the recommendations, I know that you just said that this is the first time you're, you're hearing it, Robert, so, and then I recall from the last time we passed an ordinance, we can make amendments on the first reading.
That is correct Mayor, once we bring the first reading to the City Council, you can make amendments to it at the first reading, and then, uh, move it forward. In fact, you can even make amendments on the second reading, the only thing that happens is, if you make amendments on the second reading, you have to start off the next meeting with the first reading yet again, so, you can make changes anywhere through that process, it just, you know, you'll start over with the first reading if you make changes. The idea is, for an ordinance, you must pass it exactly the same on the first reading and the second reading, in order for it to become an ordinance. If you change it at any point in that time, you just start over, but you can do it.
Great, so I think we can take everybody's considerations into, uh, everybody's, everybody's concerns into consideration, and then as you write the ordinance, you can see what's feasible, what's not feasible, and then we can have a big discussion that day, we can have the ordinance, we can save some time, and we can make the amendments then and there, even with the little study session as well.
Okay, and, and given some of the concerns that have been raised today, would you mind if we, if you give me thirty days to kind of really, uh, move through this and bring it back for a first reading at the, not the next meeting, but the meeting after, uh, Vice Mayor?
Not at all, I actually want you to, to do the research and make sure that what we are doing is appropriate, and like Councilmember Dan, Damian said, you know, maybe the fifteen years is a little too close, uh, of a time, so we can even push it back a few years, but, but I definitely would like to see homes and condos and duplex and mobile homes added to it, because we do have, uh, tenants that, that are struggling when they're trying to increase their rent, and they, they can't afford to move anywhere else, but definitely need to look at, at all the angles to make sure that it, it's a good, uh, it's, it's something good that we're bringing forward for everybody, so yes, do your research, make sure, uh, we have all our Ts crossed and our Is dotted before we make this decision.
Okay, thank you.
Great, and I think that's, I think that's a fair, uh, way to go about it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, uh, Robert, with the, uh, with the changes that you suggested under Attachment One, um, is, is that something that we have to take up, you know, at our next meeting, sooner than later, and then, all the other discussion items that we've talked about, which are additional new items, uh, that we can bring on at a different time, will that preclude us, or, you know, not provide the protection that our, uh, current renters have right now?
Uh, no, there's really no urgency here, because, um, you know, the, the changes that I've made thus far are not changes that were, um, that are causing us any problems currently. Um, they were problems that, uh, did arise, and I have been able to work with the landlord and the property owners, and so they are not instituting, uh, these changes for parking and, uh, utilities and things of that nature at this time. So, there is no urgency there, we can do this in a holistic way, and we can bring back in thirty days, uh, not only the changes I've suggested tonight, but some of the other changes that, uh, are the, the changes that I brought forward tonight, but, uh, some of the changes that have been suggested tonight, without any harm to any of our residents or any, uh, concern that they will be, um, taken advantage of in the ways that we're trying to correct now.
I appreciate that, I just, you know, I just want to be mindful as we, you know, do the outreach, uh, that we have sufficient amount of time, uh, to do that, um, but, you know, once we see what, uh, a new draft looks like, um, I certainly would like to see, obviously, what that is, and then we can go from there, um, and how we, you know, uh, in, uh, include our, uh, our residents and our homeowners, um, that would be, you know, obviously impacted by this, um, in some way or another regardless, uh, but, you know, again, just making sure that, uh, you know, we're being fair and we're being transparent, uh, and we do it in a, you know, in a reasonable amount of time, and not necessarily be done, uh, within thirty days, because I don't think in thirty days, uh, that would be fair to, really, any, any side, per se.
I think, uh, uh, Councilmember, I think, uh, my goal is going to bring back, uh, a draft for you in thirty days. Um, at that point in time, the council can decide, you know, whether they want to give out notices, or they want to send out notices, have a study session, or any of the other things, the options that have been discussed tonight, that, that's my understanding. But I'm going to try and bring something back to you in thirty days, so you can start looking at, you know, what you want to do with that.
Robert, I, I think it's, I think it's good to provide the information that is being requested, I think it's a little bit, uh, thirty days to have even a draft ordinance. Um, I want to make sure that we're really thoughtful about this, and, when, my request would be, can you, in your research, can you look at other cities that have adopted something similar to what is being proposed? Um, I'd like to kind of look at some case studies, and then, something that I'm going to be looking at is, um, yes, we want to create affordability currently, but I also want to look at what, you know, the future, so as the cost of living increases in California, um, and in our region, what does it mean for a property owner who bought a home, whether it was twenty years ago, ten years ago, five years ago, thirty years ago? And, uh, I want to understand how these rent controls would impact them, because I also don't want, I want there to be continued investment in our community, and, um, so, there's more to consider here, so, I just wanted to express, you know, I don't think it's, I think it's really overreaching to say that we're going to have a draft ordinance in thirty days, because I think there's a lot of research that has to happen between Councilmember Hernandez's, um, questions, Councilmember Damian, mine, um, so, you know, maybe we can just have a preliminary conversation, and like the mayor said, a study session, so that we can really think through some of these things, and then come back with an ordinance, if that's where we move, if we move in that direction.
Well, like, for example, tonight, um, I, I just brought back a, a draft for you, but it's not on for a first reading, it was just, you know, for your review, and then to tell me what to further do, so, that's sort of what I anticipate, is just to bring something back, so you can look at it again, and then tell me what to do, whether that is, you know, the council's decision to, um, have a study session, or to do whatever, uh, you wish. It, it may be, uh, a little, uh, optimistic on my part, um, because I do think, uh, this is going to take, uh, a little bit more research than, um, the changes that have been suggested thus far, um, but I'm going to do my best.
Well, I think it's, I think it's going to require a lot of research, but, I think it also, we need to provide some, you know, we need to ask questions, we need to look at things before we put something together, I think, um, so that, you know, we provide direction, and usually that doesn't happen in thirty days. So, that would be my, you know, my concern is, let's, like Councilmember Hernandez said, let's not rush this process, um, this is a, a process that, I mean, this is an ordinance that can impact our property owners here, and our, our local economy, so let's not rush this, let's, let's be thoughtful, let's take into consideration, you know, the research that Robert is going to put together for us, look at how this has impacted other communities, and then we can go from there, in a study session. And then, like Councilmember Hernandez said, you know, having the community input is very important.
So, I mean, you know, Robert, it's, I think, you can bring it back, you know, whenever you feel ready, I know that there's that first motion, it's going to be a long discussion, I think, but either way, you can bring back a draft, we can look at it again, and start putting in what we think is, uh, in there, and I think that gives us time to also talk to our residents, I know, Kiana and Beatriz, they're very, uh, opinionated on, on housing law, and, uh, they're some of the ones that are more, more closely related to, uh, housing organizations, so we can also hear their recommendations on things like this, and we can kind of, uh, you know, kind of play with the draft for a little bit, but, um, you know, after all, you are doing the research, and you are doing the, uh, you are the, the writer, so, you know, we kind of work at your pace.
Thank you Mayor.
Thank you Robert.
So, I believe that kind of, uh, so item fourteen, um, so we're working that, with that recommendation, we'll, um, so I think the motion is that we will kind of work on this, you'll bring back a draft, we'll try to find suggestions from the community as well, and we'll work on some community input as well, correct?
Very good, yes.
Great, okay, uh, so I'm making a motion to pass number, item number fourteen, can I get a second? Uh, City Clerk, roll call.
Yes, thank you Mayor. Uh, Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Protem Avila? Councilmember Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yep.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you, uh, and then, right quickly before we end, I know that, uh, yesterday, the Board of Supervisors, uh, actually passed their item, to start a ten million dollar fund with ARP money that they've received, to help fund programs like the ones that we are currently working on, on both Garvey Streets, so I just want staff to make sure that they are following that, it did pass, and the funds should be available, uh, starting January first, so we want to make sure that we keep on top of that, so that we can start capturing as many dollars as possible to keep our programs running smoothly. And then I know Chief, uh, you've been talking about some, uh, pretty neat incentives, so I know that you've been working on trying to get some lateral transfers and some lateral hires. So, I would like, uh, so I would like for, um, I would like for, I believe, one of the reasons, one of the uses for ARP is actually to incentivize, uh, workforce to join us, and I believe that you can look, uh, to create a bonus incentive to get some officers in here, I know that we are a little shorthanded, and we have been for a while, so this is an ability for you to, uh, um, up your, 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 uh, your count of officers, and then I know that you also talked about a reward program, where we can, uh, incentivize, uh, bystanders that when it's a crime, um, report the activity, and they can be rewarded for such, and, so, Chief, if, if you'd like to work on that, I'd, I'd like for you to work on that, and then, also, I know that you had a, uh, wishlist on your ARP, I think it would be, uh, a good time for you to also work as that, as well as we look to increase our infrastructural updates.
Yes sir, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Uh, we're now in, uh, sorry, we're now at the, we're at the end, right? We're now doing requests? Okay, just want to make sure, um, Enrique and Manny, um, if you can provide at, at our next meeting, uh, you know, a pilot program outline for council to consider, uh, the usage of, uh, Morgan Park in the field there, uh, you know, during, uh, evening hours, uh, for groups that, uh, you know, may not have the resources, uh, to pay for, you know, the, you know, for the rental fee of, of the field, and or more importantly, uh, the rental fee for the lights. Um, I know we've discussed this in the past, uh, we've had folks come to our community, um, so let's see if we can develop a, a, a program, a pilot program, uh, you know, for this, uh, current fall, um, and, excuse me, winter, and, uh, that, you know, we can look at and provide an opportunity for, uh, members of our community, uh, to be able to be engaged and participate in our parks, uh, after hours, thank you.
I also want to ex... Oh, go ahead.
Just wanted to say that we will do so, uh, Councilmember Hernandez.
Yes, I want to echo the, the same, um, support for these programs and, and accommodating them, uh, at Morgan Park, and I also want to welcome back Manny Carillo, so it's so good to, to, to see you, um, right there in the little corner there, and, um, welcome back, we're, we're happy to, that you're, that you're back, you're back home, thank you.
Thank you, it's great to be back, thank you.
Yes, it's nice to see our, uh, oh yes. We have some, uh, we have some famous dogs on our, and so if anybody has passed by our bus shelters, we have some famous dogs. Isn't that right, Sam?
Yes.
Do you have a copy of this? Maybe you, you'd want to take over this one.
Yeah, so I, I don't have a copy. Um, I understand, remember, distribute them. Yeah, hi, uh, thank you, mayor. So, um, a couple of months ago, uh, we got a letter from a concerned resident regarding, um, uh, dog.
Droppings.
Pet waste. And so in a response, uh, to that, we developed a campaign, uh, advert, ad campaign or PSA surrounded or, um, supported by our, uh, Stormwater Program. So, uh, this flyer is a Spanish and English version of, of, of that flyer and it highlights two of our, um, uh, pets, uh, one, uh, the mayor who is Matilda and, uh, a staff member Rosa who is, uh, Miller. So the ad is, um, it, it's a little different that the messaging now is coming from the actual dogs as opposed to the city letting people know, uh, that this is a problem. But now the messaging now comes from the dogs themselves. So that's a little, uh, twist that we gave it to. Yes, and so we're going to be distributing these at, at our events. Um, and we have some, uh, doggy, uh, bag containers that we'll be handing out at most of the events.
Yeah, very neat. Yeah, I just saw them today. I saw them heading towards, um, the Brandywine Homes. I saw them all in that street and then on one side is one dog and the other side is the other dog.
Right.
But yeah, so, so very neat. You got very creative with that. I think that's really good advertisement.
Yeah, so, so the campaign started this week. You'll see them in the bus shelters. It's coming to the now and it'll be on our website.
I think I also got the, the peek on the now. I opened it up as soon as it got sent to my email. So, yeah, the now looks really good as well. So yeah, thank you. Yes, thank you for that.
And thank you for this.
Oh, you already got one, huh?
You're welcome.
Well, I think that, uh, that's the end of our meeting. Um, so at this moment, I will, uh, move to adjourn. Can I get a second?
Second.
Great, uh, meeting is adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Night, everybody.
Vamos. Uh, Manny, you want, you want to back?
I guess my glasses weren't good.
Yeah, so, uh, I don't know if that's, that's the mayor's dog. That's the mayor's dog and then Rosa's dog.